I'd like to call the order, the voting session for July the third, 2023. The invocation will be given to us by Pleasant Grove Baptist Church Pastor Ed Robinson. Pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Tommy Ledford. Please stand.
Would you bow your heads with us in prayer? Eternal God, our heavenly Father, it is again that you have allowed us to awaken to another day. It is not because we've been so good and so kind, but it's your mercies that has a chance to give us another opportunity. Thank you, Father, for these men and women who have given their time and their name and their efforts to this county. Pray for each one of them. Pray for our chairman, our vice, our mayor, and all these men that makes up this commission. You know what lies ahead for this community. And Lord, you have placed in positions the mindset of individuals that will come together collectively and do what's best for this city and this county. I pray, Lord, that as we go through this day, that your grace and mercy and your spirit will be upon them. For it's in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray, and amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And before the roll call, I'd like to welcome Chamber of Commerce President Mike Griffith and representing the Director of Schools, Susan Willcutt. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Goins on approval, Rogers on second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford. Cry.
Yes.
Blake. Collins.
Yes.
That'll be fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the report from the county mayor. Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I passed out a flyer reminding everyone about leaf graduation coming up in a couple of weeks, to be sure. Put that on your calendar if you can make it that day. The other thing is you have a memo in front of you that doesn't have to be voted on, but unless someone has a problem, I would like to ask that it be made part of today's minutes. This is where the comptroller requires that we notify you officially that we are moving the gambling tax money to capital projects as required by law. So unless someone has opposition to that, I'd like to request that be made part of the minutes. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to also overlook the lady here from agriculture. Welcome. Hannah, glad to have you, Hannah. Thank you. The consent agenda, entertain a motion for approval of the... No, we don't have. Okay. Yeah, we got it voted, don't we? Okay. Commissioner Rogers on the motion to, and Commissioner Winters on the second. Any discussion? Commissioner Beatty? Commissioner Beatty? This might be the place where you... No, no, it's the next one that you want to... I'm sorry, like I told you. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins. Slater.
Here. Yes.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford. Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
We'll now go to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll go to our right, Commissioner Beatty, please.
Everything's doing pretty good in the first district.
You want to...
I can do it now or later. You want me to go ahead and do it now?
Yeah, do it now, yes.
Yeah, I want to pull the... On the agenda item F, I want to pull it for right now, because a lot more things has come up and and we need to have it at a work session. I found out a lot more things.
Thank you. Got all, sir? Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing today.
Commissioner Alford.
Second, good.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All is good in the third one. I wish everybody a happy and safe fourth. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echo Commissioner Blake as well. All is well in the third.
Commissioner Winters.
All is well with the second, Mr. Chairman. Glad to see Ed Robertson, Robinson, with us today. That gentleman just is celebrating his fortieth year as pastor of his church. Is a great leader in this town. He was a school board member when I was, years passed, and you could hear that voice. It is like the voice of God is speaking right to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert.
I'd like to say happy Fourth of July to everybody who won't be here. And my birthday's on the fifth. I was almost a firecracker. I liked about fifteen minutes being a firecracker. So happy Fourth of July, happy Independence to everybody, and thank God for America. That's all I got.
Well, that's a mouthful right there. Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
I like everything but the rain. But anyway, I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and get a lot of firecrackers.
That it? Commissioner Goins.
First district soon will.
Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. Have nothing either, but happy Fourth, everyone. Thank you.
Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one, two things here. Valley View Church last night shot up fireworks, so I got to see fireworks first thing last night. It was real good. Church across the street from my house, which made it really nice for me. Just sat out in the yard and watched fireworks. And I'd like to also comment, me and Tim and I think a couple others came to the Republican Party meeting last Tuesday. I'm so proud that we have a... I think his name is William Lambeth, Majority Leader. He's a great guy. I enjoyed coming in and kind of getting to know what the Republican Party is all about. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to wish all of you and everyone in Bradley County a happy Independence Day. I'm a little sleep deprived right now. I had a ten-hour drive last night from Orlando back and got back in Bradley County about 4:00 AM. And we, on our way back, our family started talking about Independence Day and what it truly means. And so we've got a fourth grader and a first grader, so we decided to read the Declaration of Independence on our way back, trying to kill ten hours' worth of time. And we talked about it and some of the things that from yesterday, what we discussed were with the fifty-six delegates that signed their name to this document were committing treason at the time. And that what they were doing actually constituted and they basically were signing their life away, because at that time treason, the penalty, which is still today, the penalty for treason is death. The most famous line, what we told them in the Declaration of Independence says, you know, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and those among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And I just want to say that I'm thankful to live in a county that, you know, we see every single day that these unalienable rights are lived out every single day, that we all have the right to live for happiness and the right to live for liberty, even though some in our nation and some around the world try to take those rights from us every single day. I would encourage everyone, if you have grandkids or if you have kids at home, to take time, just like we do at Christmas. We read the Christmas story to read the Declaration of Independence and study it and learn about it during this time. Also, while I've been gone for the past week and a half, I've been able to see some of those pursuits of happiness, with a lot of businesses opening up. And I know the Chamber is doing a great job of bringing new businesses into our town and especially also the Veterans Home that opened up a few weeks ago. I know that they're going to do a great job for our community and for southeast Tennessee, and I'm really pleased to see that project finally come to life and finally open. Thirdly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like all of us, if we could, to keep Bella Cup in our thoughts and prayers. Bella is a student at Cleveland High School who last week was in a tragic accident down in Florida. She had to have some brain surgery. She started to wiggle her toes and her fingers. And we know that it is going to be a long road of recovery for her and her family while they are still in Florida. But we are all praying very earnestly that she will get to come back home to Bradley County, to Cleveland, and that we will hopefully see her on the sideline of a Raiders football game soon, as she's a cheerleader there at Cleveland High School. And lastly, I know it's a little bit, but lastly, I want to say congratulations to my daughter Ivy and all of her teammates, roughly fifty of them. Like I said, we were in Orlando this week, this past week, and my wife and my other two daughters and I were down there cheering on Ivy and her teammates on the Dance World Nationals. Ivy and her teammates worked really, really hard this year, but they won actually twenty-four national championships this past week. And so I am a super proud dad right now and a super tired dad, but there's about forty different teams that were down there, and they actually won the Studio of Excellence as well. There's probably close to four thousand girls, and it was loud. It was a long, long day. It was a twelve-hour day yesterday, plus a ten-hour drive home, so it made for a long day. But we're super proud of them and all the girls at Scenic City Dance, and just wanted to say congratulations to them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the approval of the agenda and entertain a motion for the approval. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Winters on the second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Agenda item A, Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today marks the culmination of the budget process, which began in February, and we fulfill our lawful duty as county commission by establishing the property tax rate and passing the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Like all budgets, this one had its own opportunities and challenges, mainly the ratio study, which we have discussed ad nauseam. The Finance Committee, with the help of assessor of property Stanley Thompson and his staff, explored all potential avenues to offset the effects of the ratio studies. But in the end, the statutory ratio study negated the county's growth projection by twenty-eight percent. A twenty-eight percent discount. However, there is a silver lining. It is the fact the ratio study highlighted the sound fiscal practices of Bradley County. Despite having over a million dollars of growth taken by the ratio study, our healthy fund balance provided the needed funds to continue government services without a hiccup. I am proud of our conservative fiscal philosophy to maintain a larger-than-requiered fund balance to handle such challenges. Also, I'd like to commend the Bradley County School Board, Director Dr. Linda Cash, and Finance Director Susan Willcutt for navigating the new state education funding formula, TISA, and those difficult decisions required to appropriate those funds. The 2023-2024 budget provides a step plan for the Sheriff's Office to implement an appropriate pay scale that we hope will reverse the retention and hiring trend. Thank you to Sheriff Steve Lawson for his work over the last couple of years to make this step plan a reality for the department. The budget also includes the first responder's mental health. In the line of duty, our first responders, law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, and 911 regularly respond and see things that would make you and I cringe. I am proud that this budget offers the opportunity for them to seek help when dealing with horrific and traumatic events. We have long known that Bradley County is a world-class place to call home, but now it seems everyone knows our secret. Thanks to the Industrial Development Board and the Chamber of Commerce, business and industry from all over the country and the world are choosing Bradley County. Mixing in the new with the existing with the mom and pops ensures economic prosperity for all of Bradley County. Also, this budget includes the greatest single-year reduction in debt during my eight years on the commission. This year, we will reduce the debt by six point nine million with no plans to issue new debt. Last, I'd like to thank Mayor Davis and his staff, our fellow elected officials, department heads, and the finance directors for their cooperation in getting us to this point. The budget process is collaborative, a full-team effort. I appreciate the citizens of Bradley County who pay their property taxes either directly or via their mortgage payments and who boost our economy with the purchase of goods and services and provide sales tax revenue to operate the government. In short, the people pay the bills, and I have not, nor will I ever, forget that. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Finance Committee, it is my honor to present the fiscal year 2023 budget. And I'll read the caption here. Section one, be resolved by the Bradley County Commissioners of Bradley County, Tennessee, assembled in regular call sessions on the third day of July 2023, that the amounts hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Bradley County, Tennessee, for the capital outlay and for the meeting of the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, according to the following schedule. And I won't go into all that. You have the itemization there. Mr. Chairman, I put this resolution in the form of motion. Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Slater on the second, open for discussion. Commissioner Gilbert.
Because my wife is an employee of the Bradley County School System, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to the obligations to the constituents and the citizens in this bodies that this body represents.
More discussion? Commissioner Thompson.
We're always glad to have a budget without a price, without a tax rate.
That's right. And I think if you'll check the state registry, ninety-five counties, we're number ninety or ninety-one on the lowest county tax rate.
Right.
So we're doing pretty good. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 I need to read my statement. Because I'm an employee of the Bradley County Sheriff's Office, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body represents, and it's yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Because my wife's an employee of the county, because my wife is an employee of the Soil Conservation Office, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body represents. Yes.
Hughes.
Because I'm an employee of Bradley County Sheriff's Office, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare my argument and my vote answer only to the conscience or to my conscience and to my obligations to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Because my wife and I are employees of Bradley County Schools, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Yes.
That'll be fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item B. Again, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next resolution is where we set the tax rate. Be resolved by the County Commission of Bradley County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the third day of July 2023, that the combined property tax rate of Bradley County, Tennessee, for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, shall be the state of Tennessee certified tax rate of one point four three nine two on each one hundred dollars of taxable property, which is to provide the revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conformers to the following levies. And you see the outline there where the tax rate is broken down between the general, county general, public library, Pike Road, city school, county city schools, cattle projects, and depth services. As was just noted, Mr. Chairman, the tax rate does not change. I put this resolution in the form of motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins on the second, open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Moving on to agenda item C, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the setting of the tax rate for the two fire districts. Be resolved by the County Commission of Bradley County, Tennessee, assembled in regular call session on the third day of July 2023, that pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated five dash seventeen dash one oh six, this county commission hereby levies an annual fire tax upon the property owners of the Fire District Two in the amount of point three five four zero of each one hundred taxable property located within the county, but outside of the Fire District One, point three three eight six of each one hundred taxable property located within the Fire District One for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, which is deemed by this commission to pay budget for the county fire tax. I put this resolution in the form of motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Winters on the second, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item D, Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I go, I would like to have these put into the minutes, if there's no objection. Also, last one is the resolution appropriating to nonprofits. Resolution making appropriations to nonprofits, charitable organizations of Bradley County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. You can see the itemization of that in the resolution. Mr. Chairman, I put this in the form of motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Slater on the second, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item E, Commissioner Mason.
Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to approve the road committee recommendation to accept Hardwick Way. You can see this on page fourteen.
Commissioner Thompson makes the second, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Agenda item F has been pulled. Agenda item G, Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on pages fifteen through seventeen of our budget packet is a resolution we discussed last week requesting the Tennessee General Assembly preserve the fundamental right of Tennesseans to keep and bear arms in the furtherance of this opposition, requesting that Governor Lee, the Bradley County Legislative Delegation, the Tennessee General Assembly, and the Tennessee Attorney General take all steps possible to oppose, protest, and challenge any such legislation that would restrict or infringe upon his constitutional right. A physical note is on page sixteen of the agenda packet. This resolution has no impact on the current county budget, nor any future county budgets. Mr. Chairman, I place this resolution in the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Who is it?
Either one of us. Either one of us.
Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Goins, I guess, tied on the second, but open for discussion, please. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.